...by the pound or hash sign. Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or...
I hate this thing some days. Okay, Harley. Gimme a second, Pete, folks. Trying this again.
Is it okay if I take this off here as well to get a... I get like claustrophobic from the mask. I just need to take off and breathe inside.
Well, six feet.
Good enough.
Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You're helping people around the world communicate for free. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. If you are the host, press star now. Otherwise, please wait and you will be joined into the conference. Please announce yourself.
Board of Selectmen. Hello? We on?
No one else is on yet.
No one else is on. It's just you.
Oh, all right. Uh, welcome to the June 20th Board of Selectmen meeting. We have called the meeting to order and have a roll call vote, so roll call, please.
Roll call. Don Klein, present.
Veronica Kell, present.
And Wayne Miller, present. Can you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Announce the meeting's being recorded and we are virtual on the phone. Chairman's additions, deletions. Nothing? Okay. First thing I'd like to do is welcome a new board member, Veronica Kell. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Forgot that we were having an election last week and that we had this meeting because this is not a regular scheduled meeting. This was a kind of a special one, so welcome. Congratulations on your win last night.
Thank you.
Typically, what we do is a reorganization of the board. We don't have to do it tonight because this is just a regular kind of informational meeting right now with just a couple of things of business. We can put that off for a couple of weeks until we have a regular scheduled meeting if that's okay with you guys. I don't really care.
Okay with me.
I just want to have a discussion about it because typically Veronica, what happens is the first year person would be the clerk and then we decide which one wants to be the chair this year. So I just wanted to let Don know I'm thinking about relinquishing chair to you.
Okay.
So think about that so we can have a discussion about it in a couple of weeks if that's okay. But I have a workload issue at home that I need to address, so.
Okay.
So if we find with that, we'll just pass that over for tonight.
It's fine with me. Can I ask a question though?
Absolutely.
When are the regularly scheduled meetings?
First and third Tuesdays. And then ask if we hold to it.
Uh, no, I don't think I need to ask.
Speaking of that, you're here next Tuesday, is that correct?
I'm not here. I'm gonna be, next Tuesday I'll be...
Okay. But Veronica and I can meet, correct? We can have a regular scheduled meeting. Now we have actually some options for a change. So if that, you want to keep that scheduled on or...
Sure.
We can do that and then just when you come back, we'll have the regular meeting, so.
You can stick Don with the chair when he's not here.
That's true, we can, can't we?
I'll become president of a water association.
So we can have just a light meeting next, next regular schedule. 2.1 joint meeting with the Water Commissioner and Bradley Warren, Guardian Group IT Infrastructure. I don't think we have a quorum of the Water Commissioners, but I don't think we need one, Jim, do we? No?
Janet Reddick.
Hi, I'm Janet.
So, Jim, I'll defer to you on this topic.
Sure. Um, we've got, um, a situation where we brought on Guardian IT as the town's IT partner and they're, they have been assessing our system, so looking at the number of devices that individually access the system and where any exposures or danger spots might be. The one thing that they've highlighted as a concern is that there is a direct connection to the Water Department into our system and they have no control over that. So, I mean, I'll defer to Brad in just a moment to explain it in more detail, but they either have to have control if they're responsible or that door needs to be closed. So that was kind of what we spoke about last week that precipitated this meeting tonight, so. I don't know, Brad, if you wanted to just speak to it for a second.
Sure. Maybe I can stand over there, would that be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Does it matter? Good evening, everyone. I'm Bradley Warren from Guardian Information Technologies. We've been retained by the town to provide IT services and support for the town. Through that process, we've deployed a device we refer to as the Guardian High, which is our proprietary system and technology to see what it can see and see what it can find. Along the way, we, um, I guess we'll say discovered or noted that there is a connection to the Water Department. The Water Department currently has seventeen active, what we call endpoints or nodes, that are somehow on their network. They have, we know that they have a server. They have a Windows 7 system which reached end of life in January. So there's no more patches and updates. That represents a security vulnerability. So I suggested to Jim that, you know, fork in the road, one of two things. Either we sever that connection to ensure the integrity and security of the town IT infrastructure and environment or that we bring them under the Guardian umbrella. Guardian is a, just to give you a little bit of background, been in business for twenty-five years. We work with probably forty to sixty communities around the Commonwealth or on the state contract. And we'd be delighted to potentially entertain the prospect of supporting the Water Department as well as we do in other municipalities.
Okay.
And that's it. No turf, no, whatever you guys want to do is fine with me.
And that's why we invited...
Yep.
Any questions?
Um, I, I think...
So...
Todd, go ahead.
So, from what I understand, I talked to Terry, Brenda, and Rebecca today. There's only one file that they use to share. They drop large files into it for assessors and the treasurer, I guess. They can get by without it. So if you want to sever it, but in regards to that, I have been talking to Jim before, can we iron out the White Mountain contract because that still isn't finished yet?
Sure. I guess my question to you on that is, do you need that if we have a service?
Yes. So, AUA, the American Water Infrastructure Act of 2018. And after researching with Baltimore said, what they're recommending from EPA is that the Water Department's have its own IT because part of the problem is where water is usually at a separate location and somewhat satellite to whatever the town is doing, they kind of get forgotten and that's what happened with Baltimore. And they still haven't been able to fix that. So one of the recommendations from the cyber people in all this is that you have your own IT. I mean, Fire Department has it, I believe, and police have their separate IT, correct? So it kind of fits that umbrella and, um, we're just trying to get through. So we would like to keep the White Mountain. We were very comfortable with it and stuff like that. So if we can get that contract ironed out as soon as possible and if you need to sever that, from what I understand, you know, it won't affect our SCADA. Our SCADA is a standalone system. Some of the other devices, he notes, are tablets and stuff that they have that they, um, they connect to download service drawings and things like that. We're trying to update the system as quickly as we can, but it's, I mean, like I was talking to Jim, I think our, the contract started negotiating or talking about it in April and last contact we had or we both had with each other was May 5th. So, you know, you have April, May, and now whatever, six weeks or so from the last contact and there's been no movement on the contract. From what I understand, White Mountain is willing to sign ours if we'll sign theirs and we can come to some sort of accord. But it, it's just, you know, it's hard to keep up with everything right now, as I'm sure you're aware. And so I would prefer to follow the recommendations of EPA and be separate and be responsible for our own IT.
If I may?
We're okay if you want us to segregate to two environments. I have a master's in electrical engineering. I think we're more than capable. We're on the state contract.
I'd have to talk to my board. I can't.
I know, you can't make that decision.
I can't make that decision.
I would, I would take that offer and present it back because that...
I will do that. How's that? I will take that offer and present it back to them.
I don't want you to understand that we, we insist on maintaining connectivity to maintain the environment. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
So don't, and again, no pressure. You guys want to segregate it?
I'll take it back to my board and...
If you could bring that up in the next...
Yeah, I think our next meeting is the 13th.
Because that just takes care of that all together and we're all set.
I, I will take it back to what I don't know...
I just need a decision from the board, from your board.
At some point.
Which way you want to go.
Because I think our next meeting is the, we don't meet next week, but we meet the weekend. The 13th is, I think, our next meeting.
So is this time sensitive? Is something...
Well, you know, we can disconnect it now and then reconnect.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because we don't need that file, that access to that server, as far as I understand. If you can disconnect, why don't you do that?
If we, if we shut that off, if we shut that off, they're going to lose services. And that's up to you. If you say shut it off...
Like what service?
Pardon me?
Like, because from what I understand, the only connection they have is that one server that they share files on.
The town owns the firewall. The town paid for the firewall. It's the town's firewall, not the Water Department's.
Okay, but we had a firewall installed before that got removed. I mean, we had set up to have it taken care of before, so I...
If you say pull the plug, just understand that...
You're gonna remove the firewall.
We're gonna shut it off and they'll lose connectivity.
And that was the concern I had because I didn't know where you stood with White Mountain or what they were...
I still wanted, as far as I was concerned, we, in fact, I thought this was all said and done. And I think Wayne did too. I think we bumped in and I just asked about this and I, I just, I'm... I'm frustrated that it takes, this isn't the only contract that has taken...
That's a separate topic, so.
Because that's now live and on the air, no other departments have difficulty getting contracts approved and signed by the Board of Selectmen. So the perception shouldn't exist that the Board of Selectmen or the Town Hall is doing something to the Water Department. It's just there's a standard form that you voted a policy that needs to be followed. And if it's not being followed, you're not going to execute it because councils...
All right, so what do I, what do I tell, then bringing that up, what do I tell all the contractors in Water? That you have Peter, uh, D.L. Marr, Chapman, Wright and Pierce, all people that work throughout New England and don't do proprietary town-specific contracts. I had a meeting with Adam in November where I brought this up and he said, "Okay, if that's the case, then it may take you a little bit more time, but we can work through that."
Well, I, and, well, I'm gonna say to the rest of that contract is I'd ask you and Adam and the Water Commissioners to work together to get that done. It has taken a long time. If it's something we want to execute or if we want to go down this route, we have to have that decision.
Let, let me be clear. Our only interest is we are not agreeable to be held in, to be held responsible if we're not accountable.
Correct.
If the town is hacked right now and we can demonstrate it's from an unpatched system in another environment, we're gonna look bad. Fair enough? And we have a number of municipalities that we do business with. That's our interest. It's not a threat. We're not saying that there's anything going on. I'm simply suggesting that if it's not a, a, a connection and it's the town's firewall, which I understand it is from looking through the documentation and the architecture and the purchases that were made, then pull the plug if we're not going to own it. So it's not a, I'm just looking for a, let's just not go halfway, okay?
Sure.
Fair?
Good.
Any questions?
I guess I, before I would say, oh, pull the plug or take it over, I would want to know what is, what the functions are. Do you have a picture, you know, that shows the system? Here's the town system. Here's the water system. Here are the things that are going to be lo, lost.
Okay, here...
And I think from a system point, I would want to know why water is transferring things to the assessors and the treasurer and how that process is going to happen if there's no connection between the Town Hall and the other. Because there may be other ways to get around it. It seems to me there could be a shared database somewhere.
That's what there is now, from what I understand.
And, and so you don't want to be responsible for a shared database? Is that what you're saying?
He's saying our stuff is unpatched, is, is a potential liability.
I'm not even saying that. I'm simply saying there is a system on that network which is Windows 7, which support, let me be clear, support expired January 14th of 2020.
No, I understand that.
Unless it was purchased, there were no security patches and updates available for that system as we speak. And it's considered an exposure by the industry. Don't, don't believe me.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. And I understand what you're saying. I think there's no way that's still the SCADA system.
I don't know.
No, no, I'm, I'm spitballing, I'm not...
To answer your question, what we have is we have a appliance here in Town Hall that looks up. And it goes through an IP address scheme, the address like your house addresses, and it says, "Is anybody home?" We've had, so right now, tonight, there are seventeen active devices that say, "Yes, I'm here." We don't know what they are. We don't know how they're working, if they're patched, what they, all I can tell you is they have an IP address.
Okay, so...
If that helps at all.
Yes, that helps. So it would be possible to look at, I think someone has to look at the system and see what makes sense.
Is it possible for you to do an assessment?
We can do an assessment there, but again, thus far, my understanding is they're independent and going in their own direction.
Well, I think to be fair to, to you guys is, I would ask that he be allowed to do an assessment for it so we can get an estimate of the scope of work that has to be done and to make us connected.
So here's my frustration. We already did that almost a year ago.
And we haven't seen that, so.
No, I, well, we presented to you when the first time through.
We had presented, we did not, we also didn't have an IT guy, so.
No, and I understand that.
I'm not going to pretend to be...
No. So that you know, I had already forwarded everything I found to Homeland Security, DEP, and EPA because there were some severe issues with what we found. The only thing I know really and truly that runs Windows 7 and it's, you should not be able to see it, is the SCADA system. And I, that was the question I asked Jim, is that was supposed to be separated and isolated before the IT person left.
We need to find that out.
Yeah, because if it isn't, that's a huge, that, that, you shouldn't be able to see that. And that's the only thing that I know of that's on Windows 7 because SCADA needs, is one of the things we're gonna need to be updated. But, um, so can I take this offer back? Can we wait for me to take, or do I need to get a special meeting of my board? I mean, what's the timeframe while I'm talking? Because I think our next scheduled board meeting is the 13th.
Well, first of all, first, I think recommending that you work with the Water Superintendent now to get that assessment done by these guys and understand that because we don't know right now. I mean, that's, that's the part we're kind of up in the air about. If that, if that separate is not, if the system is not separate, we need to get that now, right?
The contract aside, does the Water Department have an active IT person right now? Because it seems what would make sense, I don't know how rushed you are with cutting that off, but it seems to me it would make sense to get your IT guy hired and then for the IT people to talk to each other. There should be a way to work this out and there should be a way to get it so you don't have responsibility and maybe the Water people do.
The way it would be is to get that contract finalized, but I don't know. To be honest with you, I wasn't supposed to be here, so I'm a little, I can talk about it enough. I just don't know what happened from May 5th to now. And so...
Council put out that the dates could be changed to forty-five days.
Forty-five days. And I think he was agreeable to that.
That was the last that we heard.
Okay. Let me get back to have Rebecca give him a call tomorrow.
Can you work, Jim, can you work with Rebecca about that?
I was gonna say, well, if the three of us get in on the call, then we won't have any of the serial stuff.
Which three? Am I included in that three?
No, you're working still.
Good, good, thank you.
Rebecca, Adam, and me.
Okay, if you can do, if you can get in on that, I would sincerely appreciate it. I don't, you know, and then I can take back to my board whatever.
And the second part of that, as I would, then I'll suggest it again, that the...
If Rebecca agrees to it tomorrow, I don't think anybody, I mean, that's within her purview is doing engineering. If she says, yeah, go at it, I don't think there's a problem with that. It's within her purview to do.
Okay, so Jim, can you do that, please?
Yeah.
All right.
And then if you need to have a meeting with your board before then...
We need about forty-eight hours or seventy-two.
Not call it an emergency one, but you can call one before your next scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Yeah, just need the forty-eight hours. This is not an emergency yet, so.
No.
I would suggest that and bringing that back to Mike and Nate and go from there.
So in the meantime, there is still connection and we're all acknowledging that you have responsibility, but you don't have authority for peace, right? And we're all recognizing publicly in this meeting that if something happens and it comes in through that pipe, you get grace.
It, from superficially, from what we have observed, if you're on any wireless network, any place in the town infrastructure, which includes the library, the highway department, the cemetery department, and I'm gonna say we haven't seen the Water Department, but we can see the number of devices that come and go, you can see every endpoint in the entire environment. The wireless networks and the networks themselves are not segregated and that's extremely dangerous.
Yes, it is.
And that's the way it seems to be, that's the way it is in Town Hall. I can tell you that for a fact as I stand here tonight. And I can tell you that that's the way it is in the library. In the library right now, we have seen a hundred and forty-one endpoints show up. In Town Hall, it's been a hundred and sixty-six, including the Water Department. So it's like open season. Understand that you do not have to be in this building or any of the buildings to connect to the infrastructure of this network.
See, and that was our concern going way, when we, when we first started going down this route, when I got on the board, I think even Paul was still superintendent at the time.
Yes, this has been going on for quite a while, so.
So...
That's why we brought these guys in.
Right.
And changed the way we're doing IT.
So, all right. Let me go to my, I will, I will, so I will call Rebecca and she, or Brenda, and they can call the other two. Is that right?
Yep.
That way I don't get in trouble?
Yep.
All right, so I will...
And I have two takeaways. One is Rebecca, Adam, and I on a call regarding the contract tomorrow.
Right.
And checking with Rebecca regarding having Brad or someone from his group come in and do an assessment to see what exists and more opportably to Veronica's point, what is going to be missed if it gets shut down? What services are going to be missed?
Yeah.
And, and what's the workaround if in fact the assessors and treasurers need data, if it is shut down, just so they can get the data to them?
Yeah, I don't want to just flip the switch tonight and cause more problems.
Right.
Yeah, that, that was my concern when I brought this up at the last meeting is I don't want to flip the switch and then have something critical be missed. And at the same time, I want to make sure that these guys can do what they need to do to make sure that this is, the entire infrastructure is here.
That's why we hired you, so, thank you for...
And again, this is not a critique of any who did what, where, when in the past.
And it's not, it's not taken as that way, to be honest with you. And I appreciate, I appreciate your, your assessment and you kind of reiterated, I thought a lot of that had been fixed, to be honest with you.
And Todd, I'll tell you right now, a lot of the stuff we thought was fixed, even here.
So that, going back to our conversation, makes me a little concerned.
About SCADA.
Because originally that was open to the Wi-Fi as well, which it sounds like it still is.
Yeah, so let's get that done and move along.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you all again for your time.
Thank you, appreciate all the work you've been doing.
Thank you for holding this meeting and between the two boards. It is appreciated. I, um, I'm sorry we didn't have a better attendance. I apologize on behalf of my board.
That's okay. I mean, it's the world we live in right now. This is the most people I've had in this room in three months.
And...
And I appreciate the social distancing. Thank you, everybody.
Know that Brad will be back at some point in the not-too-distant future to give kind of the onboarding assessment.
That, I look forward to that. Thank you.
You heard, you heard bits and pieces of it filtering through and I know it was resonating with, with you.
Every time I've been here in the last couple of weeks, I've seen your guys here, so. I'm impressed.
Webster.
Okay, excellent.
All right, thank you, Rick.
Jim, one last thing on that. Once you get it squared away with Rebecca and Adam, can you just keep the board...
Oh, sure.
They could be on that list. There are us on the list too.
Thank you, thank you two for coming in. Appreciate it.
No.
All right.
I will see, you guys all set with me?
I think we're done, yeah.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. Get my head if it were attached.
All right, 3.1.
Be safe.
You too.
3.1, set the date for the annual special town meeting. I know Kathy asked me last week that we need to provide that soon, like now.
Yep, and you've currently got it as July 25th, which is a Saturday, to be held over at the, uh, the campus of the Library Senior Center. But it hasn't been a final vote, so in order to know when her last day of registration to vote is, she needs to have an official vote, then that's the date. So if that's your wish.
And we're still planning to do outside?
Yep.
I know there've been other meetings in other towns. Do, any assessment in how they went?
In Marblehead last night, they had it under tents in the pouring rain and they, um, every video clip that I saw on LinkedIn or, or, um, I forget, Instagram, I think, talked about the fact that it was, it was fun. Everybody actually enjoyed getting out and being socially distant, but actually doing the town's business, so.
Okay.
We've had, in Chatham, they did it in their cars. They actually had a parking lot.
I saw that. That looked, that was interesting.
In their cars. I don't know how well you'll hear unless you get the radio frequency figured out like the drive-in. They also used clickers to vote, um, because obviously trying to just yell at your car window is probably not going to work.
Do we need to set a rain date? That was my second question.
Well, I, I think if you are gonna limit it, as you've indicated so far, to just the financial articles that have to, you know, have to be taken care of. Even if it is raining, get done. You have, you know, we've gotten the authority to go beyond July 1st from DOR and do the 112 budget. There aren't a lot of people going beyond the end of July so far. So I'd say stick the date and stick with it.
Okay.
So we're, so we're going to present the 112 budget then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
No, no, excuse me. We, we have the 112 budget in place.
It's the finalized, our final budget.
You voted last week.
Okay.
We'll be looking at finalizing the 21 budget, which is another whole animal altogether because the state still hasn't determined what type of cut they're going to be giving.
Well, that would have been my next question is, because normally we would have had time to go and review all of that and I know that you've been making changes.
Yeah, I think since, I think the, since the last time it was before you, very little has changed. I've made adjustments downward on revenue projections just because of what we've seen with things like restaurant tax and excise tax are down. So I've made those adjustments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, can you identify yourself, please?
It's, it's Janet, Mr. Chair. Could you ask people to speak up, please? You're about the only one that can be heard.
I know. It's the, it's the proximity of the phone where we're all spread out. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'll, I'll yell Janet.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. So the budget, very little has changed. I've, I've come down on revenue estimates. The one thing that's a point of concern, and you've already talked about this, is the school budget. The school budget was recertified last week. I sent an email out to you. You should have received. That they recertified... that they recertified it with some different numbers than the one that they had previously certified, but it did not result in a change in assessment. So that still is a five-hundred-thousand-plus-dollar increase that is being sought by the school department.
Is that prior to the governor's announcement or was that after the governor's announcement? Because he announced that they're putting five-hundred-and-something million dollars to the schools?
It was almost concurrent with. I know that they were waiting until they got the governor's guidance on how to hold classes, the different options. But I think they voted it the night before that.
It still aren't finalized. I mean, we have three options right now that are not finalized.
Right. But the, all indications from the meetings that I've had face-to-face with the superintendent and what we've seen from the school community meetings coming back by email is that they're not changing the assessment. So for us, five-hundred-thousand dollars is nearly all of the new revenue that we can raise in a year in property tax and local receipts.
So we may be looking at cuts throughout the year then?
If, if the town meeting is presented that school budget number, yes, you're looking at probably north of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of cuts in the general government budget that would need to be made.
Okay.
Are we gonna sit down and review this one last time?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Because I have a big concern with having to cut that much out of the general government.
Can't do it.
Let's schedule a working session outside of this, our general meetings, just to discuss that separately.
And if we can, at your convenience, get together whenever you can, pop in, we can just dedicate time to whatever your specific questions are. I know Veronica, you're coming into this kind of like being airdropped into a, you know, firefight that's been going on for a month.
It's always been unfair. I thought the new person comes in and they're handed a budget that they've never seen before.
So is that available somewhere that I can review?
Yeah, I can email it to you. We can make it, we can make it part of the Thursday. If we're gonna get together Thursday, I can have the policies that we talked about. I can have the budget. I can have a legal update for you, so we can go through.
Should I have a laptop with me?
That'd be good, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Next question. This, this is, if it's the twenty-fifth, that's three weeks from Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, so as far as budget goes, how will the town be able, the townspeople be able to review the budget prior to that meeting? Will there be the ability to project at the library? If there's rain, what happens and how will we vote? What if there's sun? Are we all gonna be there with our parasols? Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, we, we planned it at nine AM for a reason because it's July and it's gonna be warm, so it should be good by then, especially where the library is.
And we've limited the, to just the budget items, correct? We took out all of the articles except anything that was critical.
Like the MVP grant match. Those, those things that are financial and time-sensitive make it, everything else is pushed off.
So how many, how many questions on the warrant?
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I haven't actually even broken it down yet, but it'll probably be shy of ten. Shy of ten articles. You'll have the budget, revolving funds, the enterprise fund.
And, and how long before the meeting does this have to be posted?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, so that means a week from Saturday it has to be posted, so you and I next week are gonna be going through this without you, Don.
I can, as long as Jim gives me any updated information, I can go through and get questions back when I get back.
That's, that's why we have to set the date tonight, because the three-week window is coming up fast. So. Can I get a motion?
This is Kathy Spofford. Can I ask a question?
Sure, Kathy, go ahead.
Is it just going to be the annual town meeting or is there going to be a special also that same day?
There's going to need to be a special for, at a minimum, the MVP grant because that. By bylaw, we have the March third deadline for annual, so the, the way to get the MVP in is to do the special in advance. We have snow and ice that would also need to be a special. Beyond that, I don't think anything more. So that's, that's the two weeks. Yeah, that's the two weeks. Because the annual is only a week.
Okay. All right, so let's, can I get a motion to set a date, please?
I make a motion that we set the date for July twenty-fifth at nine AM.
Second?
I'm not used to having three people here.
Been a while.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I wanna know the mechanics of how this is gonna work.
Well, that's what we're trying to work through now, so.
Like right now, we're working through this or?
Well, there's been thought. I'll let Jim answer the.
Facilities is working on power on the last time they've held any type of event there when they've had power on the parking lot. The original thought was to be doing it in the parking area itself, but given that it's end July, that pavement might heat up pretty quickly, so the thought is moving it back into the grass.
So you're talking the grass in between Squanah Cook and the library, up on that mound there?
Correct. And it would be circles chalked on the ground.
And people will bring their own chairs?
Bring your own chair or blanket.
And the PA system?
That's what they're working on.
That's the power?
Right.
And projection?
Probably not gonna have projection. I mean, we're.
So we have to think about how we're gonna?
It's gonna be hard copy.
But how we're going to reference things. It's a teacher in me, sorry. That could be a real mess.
Well, I've asked Jim this last year, and I think we did it last year, is the Excel sheet that you printed and presented, there's line item numbers to identify which line item we're on. That's the only way it works.
And everybody will have a copy of that and it will be written in minimal font.
They did last year, yeah.
Last year was the best one I've seen in quite some time.
All right.
And people have to realize that it's, it's not like a regular town meeting that we've had in the past that we've had to make some compromises in order to be able to hold this and still do social distancing and be able to, you know, get the town business done that we need to do.
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things we're gonna need to discuss next week is quorum size. Because I understand, last time we talked about this, we have the ability to adjust the quorum size.
You do.
Is that one of the things from the state?
Yeah, the governor's office. Kathy, do you know what the, the number of days in advance for the board to reduce the quorum?
I don't. Not off the top of my head. I'd have to look that up.
If you could check tomorrow, Kathy, that'd be great.
I think it's seven days before the meeting. It's gonna be sent into the state so they can acknowledge they received it.
So if we, if we vote next Tuesday to change it, we can, we're playing a time. Okay. Any other questions, Veronica?
Nothing that about does it.
Okay, let's, let's vote. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Right, thank you. All set, Kathy?
All right. Thank you very much.
Three point two, review approved municipal relief transfer from the fire department. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion.
Can I ask a question about the town meeting? Can we go back for a minute?
Sure.
Has anyone notified John Barrett, the moderator?
I've spoken to John and he is available.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Don, sorry.
All right. I make a motion that we approve a municipal relief transfer to the fire department in the amount of thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars to be transferred from account number Full-time firefighter paramedic to account number Repair and maintenance of a vehicle.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Jim, what's this for, since we don't have a packet?
The, the fire chief had expenses this year for equipment repairs that went above that, which would have been normal or expected, clearly more than was budgeted. He also had vacancy in his firefighter paramedic line. You know that there was one position that was filled for a short period of time and that has been unfilled. He's been trying to fill it still. So there's excess fund in that salary line and he needs the additional funds in the expense line, so. In the month of June, you're allowed by vote of the finance committee and the select board to do an intermunicipal relief transfer, which is what this process is, so. He's basically looking for the ability to use some of his salary money to pay for some of the expenses in this project.
Any questions?
No.
No, you would want this.
Okay.
And the finance committee looked at this already?
I don't know if they've approved it as of yet, but it doesn't, doesn't have any specific order that it needs to go on, but it can't be effective unless both have voted it.
And when would they vote it?
I don't know when the next meeting is. They may have already.
All right, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Four one, Town administration updates report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is discussion, consideration, appointment of a building commissioner. As of the last meeting, we had a discussion around the building commissioner position and I had shared with the board that the candidate that had been the second consideration in this last recruitment and but for the fact that the first candidate had been an alternate for us fifteen years, they would've been equally considered as, as top candidates. He's now the candidate before you and your, your vote to do this process was that we, on a staff level, do the interviews. It's the same with land use. I know Veronica, you participated in some of that. And then bring a name forward. Don specifically wanted to ask some questions of the gentleman, so I believe Eric Chartrand, certified building official who is from Pittsburgh, currently working in Pittsburgh. Are you on the line there, Eric?
I am.
Excellent. So Eric, if you had a thirty-three seconds to pitch yourself, how would you do it?
I'm doing pretty good. I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, but, but I'll make it through. So, so yes, I came in and interviewed with James this week for the second time and I'm looking for, to be appointed as the position of building commissioner for the town of Townsend. I've got a very good rapport with my, the people in my area and amongst my colleagues. And even though I've only been doing this for three years, I'm looking forward to the challenge of being the commissioner in Townsend, especially since you guys have been without for, you know, some time, approximately eight months. So I'm looking forward to getting in there and, and doing some work.
Okay. Don, I've met the guy and I've talked to the building commissioner already, so.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry. I hadn't met you before tonight, Eric. I'm glad you're, have, have put forth your application for this. Just a couple of things. I noticed that, again, you just mentioned too that you've only been a building inspector for three years, but you have, it looks like about seventeen, eighteen years' worth of experience in construction. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I've been a carpenter since I was fifteen. I was taught by my father. And even though I only have three years under my belt, working in the city of Pittsburgh, it feels like I've been doing it a lot longer due to the size of the city and, you know, the, the the varying nature of the types of work that we have here. It, it's a little bit different, so. And I was blessed enough to be working under the building commissioner here, which is Mark Barbodaro, and he's taken me under his wing, which was, was very great of him. I'm looking forward to having him as a colleague still, but he trained me very well and I moved through the schooling very quickly.
Can you just kind of, I saw here that you were a construction supervisor, product manager, a project manager for several companies? Can you kind of give me a little bit about what you did for them in those, in those roles?
Yeah, sure. So I spent some time in New York City renovating a theater out there for them. And I also worked here in Massachusetts for a company, they're based out of New Hampshire, but Pilot Construction. I did a big apartment complex up there with them. And then after that, before I moved to the building department, I worked for a solar company for approximately three years, which basically put me on the path to this career, working for the solar company. I got to apply for and meet almost every building inspector in the state. And I had a lot of favorable experiences with those guys. And my thoughts on that were, you know, as you get older, you start to wonder how much your body can take and you have to move into a position of management where you're going to have to do something else with your career because unfortunately, if you swing the hammer for twenty-five years, your shoulder will not laugh. So you, you end up having to, to use your head. So what I did while I was working in, you know, in those capacities was I, I just started going to school and getting as many certifications as you possibly can because putting world's greatest carpenter on your resume doesn't, doesn't just have the same ring as, you know, having the accolades. So you, so you really have to stack that stuff up if you wanna be considered for positions like this.
Okay. I, I noticed that you said in your cover letter that you've worked with different people within the city of Pittsburgh as, as a building inspector, including the fire department? Who, who have you worked with at the fire department?
So at the fire department here in Pittsburgh, I'm lucky enough to have a fire department that, that gets along with their building department. I have spoken to other departments and the relationship can be, can be a little bit different than what I have here. I'm a pretty lucky guy in that aspect, but I've worked regularly with Lieutenant Phil Jordan of Fire Prevention and also Scotty Peralta with Fire Prevention, but also Chief Roy, even though this is his last day. He's retiring today. It's his last day. I had a lot of interactions with Chief Roy as well, but, you know, if you're having interactions with Chief Roy, it's gotta be rather serious. For the most part, I dealt with, with the guys in the, in, you know, the boots on the ground and Lieutenant Jordan because that, that's the position that the building department really works with is fire prevention. And like I said, if you're doing, you know, if you're doing board of survey stuff, you know, border secure or, you know, removal of buildings, you, you may rub shoulders with the chief a little bit, but for the most part, you're working with fire prevention out here quite frequently.
Okay. And you work with the deputy chiefs often on too? I think they, they are responsible too, aren't they? For some inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you respond to like a call, you know, if you're responding to a car in a building, fire, those situations there, you're gonna be working with whoever's on the scene that day. That's, that's just the way it's gonna be. So when you get a call like that and you're, you're going into life safety to determine whether or not building's habitable, you know, you're working with whoever's on the scene. So yet deputy chiefs, you know, could be regular firefighters, depends on the severity. We did have that one incident out here with a guy blew up a bomb and took out that whole apartment complex. That one was complicated. You know, you have everybody on scene that day. That's, that's a tough one.
Okay, I really, you know, if I, I didn't have the resume and stuff in front of me when I asked Jim to meet with you, but now that I've had a chance to go through it and read your, read your resume, I'm, I'm pretty impressed.
Yeah, and just my feedback too from, from speaking with both Jim and, I'm gonna forget her name, I'm sorry.
Janet?
Janet. I, I think this is a good fit and I'm gonna ask for a motion to appoint him to building commissioner.
Okay, I will make a motion that we appoint Eric Chartrand as the new commissioner of buildings and is there anything else on that? Just building?
Building commissioner.
Just the building commissioner?
With the standard contingencies.
Contingency of podcasts.
Yep, union position, so that's all covered in union contract and then pre-employment physical and successful query.
Okay.
I'll second that motion as amended. Any discussion, Veronica? I know, I know this was kind of before.
I haven't even seen his resume, so no discussion.
Yeah, this is kind of all done before you joined, so you can abstain from voting if you need, want to. That's up to you. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Cowell abstained.
Okay, Wayne Miller, yes. So, welcome aboard, sir.
All right, thank you. Alright, thank you very much, I'm very much looking forward to getting busy and getting some stuff done out there.
Awesome.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you for joining the team.
Eric, this is Jim, we'll catch up tomorrow morning.
Sounds great.
Excellent, thank you.
Eric, this is Janet, congratulations, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you, Janet, I'll see you guys soon.
Okay, have a good night. Anything else, Jim?
Negative.
Okay, 4.2, Board of Selectment Announcements Updates Reports, I got nothing.
Nothing.
Veronica, I assume you have nothing?
Not a thing.
I have to ask.
Go to you first.
Uh, 4.3, Review and Sign Payroll Bills and Payable Warrants, can I get a motion there?
Uh, I make a motion that we sign bill payable warrants and payroll warrants out of session.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's it, can I get a motion to adjourn unless there's something else?
I, I have one question.
Sure.
What does it mean to sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session, does that mean that each of us needs to do something?
Typically, every week we get, I forget what day the date is, Wednesday, we get-
We get a packet.
We get a packet, it's either in there or in here when we have a meeting, it's just all the payroll stuff we have to sign.
And when you sign that typically, like is that typically done right at the meeting, or is it done-
Right after the meeting.
Often it's right after the meeting, or you can come in the next day if you wanna spend more time with it, so, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes they're not available tonight, so, this, that's typical what we're doing, you'll get this, all this review stuff when, your first year is learning, as you'll find out.
Yes.
Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn then, please?
Uh, I make a motion that we adjourn at 6:53.
And I'll second that, I guess, so next meeting typical, next Tuesday, 6 o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes, alright, thanks, Hartley, we're out.